Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Planning Commission for November 9th, 2015, to order. If I could get everyone to please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll run through tonight's agenda real quick. First item would be the consent agenda. Next item, we'll be having a public hearing for a conditional use permit at Prescott Plaza. Third item on the agenda is a preliminary plat for QuickTrip. Fourth item is a preliminary plat for Chapman Farms Lot 10, and then we'll have other business in adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
I move that we approve the October 26 minutes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Before I open the public hearing, I'm just going to run through the -- I've lost my procedure for it. I've lost my train of thought there. Procedure for the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, call for the exhibits. Staff will make their presentation, then the applicant will be asked to come forward and make their presentation. I'll then ask for witnesses in favor to speak, then witnesses opposed. I'll have discussion among the commissioners, then I'll close the public hearing, and we will take a vote on that. So with that, I would open the public hearing for conditional use permit CUP-10-15-5011, and ask for the exhibits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city has eight exhibits. Exhibit one, the staff report with attachments. Exhibit two, the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner on October 24th, 2015. Exhibit three, application with attachments. Exhibit four, a 185-foot notification map. Exhibit five, the names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Exhibit six is a copy of a letter sent to the property owners. Exhibit seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances, and exhibit eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are the city's exhibits.
Thank you. And Mr. Hawley, would you like to give the staff presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a vehicle repair limited on this subject property. The property is located at 2620 South Highway 7. There is a vicinity map up on the overhead here. It's located on the east side of Southwest 7. It's approximately 250 feet south of the corner of Southwest 7 and Southwest Parkway Drive. The project area consists of about 1.89 acres, and it does have a multi-tenant retail building located on it, and it is zoned general business. So in brief, for a background, the site was platted as part of the John Turner Edition in 1992. It was replatted in 2004 to its current boundaries, and the site plan design review for the multi-tenant retail building at Prescott Plaza was approved in 2004. And there is a more complete history provided, if you're interested, on page four of seven of the staff report. So again, the applicant is requesting to develop a car vehicle repair limited type service with automobile maintenance. There are three existing service bays, and we'll see if we can't now go to this map.
You jumped one ahead.
Yeah, here's the -- well, this was the -- whoops, I did. Here we go. We're back up here into the maps. I guess we only have a site location map with this, so unless we can push that -- come up with this.
Can you just scroll through it?
Yeah, I got it. This is all I'm looking for, really, right here. Apologize for that. Again, the applicant is looking. There are three existing car bays. This is the portion of the building for which the Auto Repair Limited will be looking to locate in. It's the former home of Benzwanger Glass. They do have three overhead doors with bays behind them in the back portion of that particular tenant space. And with that, then, again, the applicant is requesting the conditional use permit. So there are several conditions that go along with the conditional use permit that are provided in Section 405-030 of the UDC -- I'm sorry, 405-050W. Those are provided on page three and four of the staff report, and they intend to meet all of those conditions. The comprehensive plan for this particular parcel is mixed-use, employment-dominant. I bring that up primarily because we are now using the new comprehensive plan, and I think it's just as an orientation to continue to try to give you that new comprehensive plan definition and -- or at least designation. There will be no body repair or painting, excuse me, performed. That would make it a vehicle repair general. It's considered a more intense use, and they do not intend to do that. They do intend to remain to the limited. So as you go through the staff report, you will see that on the -- of the various things that we look at, including access, the existing access will remain the same. Parking, the only thing really that we mention in the parking is that there are some -- there is some maintenance that's needed in the parking lot, and they will be required to provide that maintenance prior to this building getting occupancy for the vehicle repair use. Stormwater detention is also mentioned, not that we need to add or change the water quality or stormwater detention, however. As part of the water quality, they -- one of the conditions is to close the existing floor drains, seal them off so that all the fluids and spills that go along with a minor vehicle repair type of use is safeguarded and will not enter into the storm sewer system. With that, staff does recommend approval with six conditions. Those conditions are provided on page seven of seven, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hawley?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Peel?
I'm sorry. Jim, were there any letters from the -- that were received from all the letters that were sent out to the partnering -- not partnering, but the surrounding businesses that had a negative impact or negative response?
We did not receive any letters to the public notice.
Okay.
Not in favor or against.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Phillips?
Sorry.
Mr. Hawley, was there any kind of a conditional use on this before when it was the glass shop?
No, because Benzwanger Glass really didn't do vehicle repair as it's defined in the code at the time. What they actually did there was that they -- of course, they replaced glass, but they kept their trucks back there, and they loaded their glass up on their trucks, but their trucks primarily went out. Now, as I understand it, and I'm not sure staff was aware of this at the time, as I understand it, they did do some vehicle, you know, repair of glass. In other words, I think you could drive your vehicle there and maybe pull it in that bay, and they would put on a new windshield or replace a broken window. I'm not sure we knew that at the time, but the answer is that they may have done some minor repair there. We just weren't aware of it at the time.
And we didn't require it?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hawley?
Yes?
I have a question. I don't know if I should pose it to Commissioner McCabe or --
Mr. Hawley, it's about the -- to the public works' attention, Ben McCabe, about the spills and the cleanup containment. Is it common for them to use hydrophobic mops and rags for cleanups even if they -- if they seal off the drains? Is that a common practice? Is there any hazard whatsoever if they have to use any other method of using water to pour down a drain?
I don't know is the answer.
That might be a good question for the applicant. They probably know more about this business than we do.
Okay.
Sounds like that should be a good thing, though.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hawley.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation? Is the applicant here?
I believe so.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the petition? And I would bring it back up here for a discussion among the commissioners on the record. Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
I guess a follow-up question for staff. Were you aware that there was or was not going to be anyone here this evening?
It has to be on record. Does -- do we want to continue this public hearing to the next meeting if some of you have questions for the applicant?
I didn't necessarily have a question. I just -- it disappoints me, shall we say, when the applicant doesn't care enough to come and be present in case we had any questions. So...
Would you like to continue?
If someone has questions that they need answered, I would have no problem with that.
Do you want to continue, though? Or we can ask for continuance?
Yeah, I know we can. We've done it many times when somebody didn't show up in the past.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Commissioner Peel.
I move that CUP- --
Can you hold on? Do I need to close the public hearing first? Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
I move that CUP-10-15-5011 be continued until the next planning commission to give opportunity for the applicant to appear and answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have at that point.
Okay. I have a motion to continue. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Second from Commissioner Cradoff. All those in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Any -- I think we're going to do a roll call vote on that.
Planning Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye.
The public hearing is continued until the December -- do we have that date?
Actually, it'll be November 23rd.
November 23rd meeting.
Yes.
So do I just leave it open and not close it?
Because the public hearing remains open, and we don't have to re-advertise or send the letters.
Okay, so I don't close it now, then?
No, we'll close it now. It's just been continued.
Okay. So we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the preliminary plat for QuickTrip. And Mr. Wright is going to present that this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before you is a request for a preliminary plat for QuickTrip Store Number 217R, which is a three-lot subdivision located at the northwest corner of Southwest 7 and Southwest 40 highways, and it includes approximately 7.64 acres. The preliminary plat shows that each lot will range in size from two to three acres with a new QuickTrip being shown on Lot 2, which is at the northwest corner of 7 and 40 Highway. There are three access points to this subdivision. There is one access off of Southwest 7 Highway, and then two accesses off of Southwest 40 Highway. Two of those accesses will be on Lot 2. One will be on Lot 1, which was the former Ponderosa Steakhouse Building. And then the third lot will have access through a cross-access easement through Lot 2. All lots are zoned general business with the exception of the north 65 feet of Lot 1 and the northwest corner of Lot 2, which you can see cross-hatched in there. Because of the location at a major intersection, safe and easy access is important, and comments have been -- comments are going back and forth between staff, MoDOT staff and city staff with the applicant. They're looking at some ways to make sure that the access is appropriate for this location. Two dedicated right-turn lanes will be provided for both of the accesses to Lot 2. And then there were some concerns about the access location on this western access not perfectly lining up with the access to the Sunset Plaza across the street, and also there's a gap in the median there. It's approximately 93 feet wide, so there are some concerns with some of the turning movements in there, and that has been a condition with the approval of the preliminary plat that staff has recommended. The applicant is working on that, as well as with MoDOT, on making sure that that's going to be a safe point of access for not only QuickTrip traffic that's going to be using the cross-access, but traffic going down 40 Highway. A few other items include a minimum five-foot sidewalk that will be required along 40 Highway and 7 Highway for all lots. Those sidewalks will be installed as each lot is developed. Also, pedestrian crossing improvements will be required at the northwest corner of 7 and 40 intersection. That will be installed when Lot 2 is developed or escrowed for future installation. And then staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the 16 conditions in the staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
Do you know -- and this may be a question for the applicant instead. Is the building on Lot 1 going to come down in this process, or is this going to be left there as a kind of a remnant?
I'll let the applicant answer that, but the last discussion was that they were going to maintain that for now, and then just see if anyone develops that, redevelops that, or can utilize the existing building. I'm not sure what condition the building is at this time.
It's been empty for quite a while.
Yeah.
And you said that the sidewalks on Lot 1 and Lot 3 were going to just be not required until those lots were redeveloped. Is that correct?
Correct. When QuickTrip will likely be the first to develop there, and they will have sidewalks on their section. Lot 1 would add sidewalks when they're final-platted. The sidewalks will be required as part of the final plating process, and more than likely each one of these lots will be final-platted individually.
That creates, again, as we've had in the past, sidewalks to nowhere. And especially on Lot 1 -- well, on Lot 3, I don't know that that's that big a deal where it's heading to the railroad tracks and there's nothing on the other side. But on Lot 1, I'd like to see that go ahead and that sidewalk -- is there any way we can go ahead and get that sidewalk in before it's planted, or is that?
I'll let that Scott answer that.
Because that sidewalk really is inherent in making the sidewalk on Lot 2 make any sense.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Allen.
Very good point. However, the policy and standard, especially with the code, is that those public improvements, which that sidewalk would be, don't come until the final plat. So applicant's not required to final plat -- not required to final plat that as a result of their project on Lot 2, so therefore they're not required to put it in the sidewalk on Lot 1. Same with the other improvements in terms of the access and things like that at this point.
I'm just afraid that we're going to plat these. Lots 1 and Lot 3 are going to remain just as they are, and actually smaller than they currently are and have even less viability than they currently have, just so we can put something on the corner. Not that I'm against what's going on the corner. I'm just concerned about that, the future of those other two lots.
Yes, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Phillips, again, good points. Certainly would recommend asking the applicant about their timing with that project as well, that lots 1 and lots 3. Because again, if that's more recent in their future plans, then obviously that plays into part just whether the sidewalks are going to come in sooner or later.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright? Yes, Commissioner Cradoff?
In terms of the arteries where you gain entry on the northwest side of 7 Highway, specifically where Flowerama is?
Yes.
There's a sort of an incline, a dip, as you go into -- onto 7 Highway. Is there any plans for repaving that entryway where the road connects with the drive?
Are you talking about in the right-of-way or onto the Flowerama property?
Onto the Flowerama property.
The applicant may be able to answer that. I'm not sure what all the grading is going to look like. I think they're still working on their grading plans for the QuickTrip site, but the accesses that are existing at Flowerama and the Laundry Mount, all those will be changed. So the -- there's -- right now, there's seven access points along this stretch. They're going to be consolidating those down into three access points. So they will be removing several of those and improving the ones that they are going to keep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation? I'd like to get you to state your name and your address, please.
Andrew Smith, 5725 Foxwoods Drive, Mission, Kansas.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Smith. I'm with QuickTrip. I've been working on QuickTrip for seven years now. I nearly promoted into real estate about a year ago. As you can see, we're going to look into developing the northwest corner of 40 and 7 with one of our new Generation 3 model stores. The new store is approximately 6,000 square feet. We're looking at a double-stack 12 canopy, so six MPDs in the front, six MPDs in the back, for a total of 24 fueling positions. Looking at a right-in, right-out access point on 7, a right-in, right-out on 40, and as well as a 40 on -- a full-on 40 that will have a wing road in front of the existing Ponderosa restaurant. Also, with our new style stores comes standard, a sophisticated security system with 24-hour surveillance to the headquarters in Tulsa. So at the push of a button, our security desk in Tulsa will have all of their monitors go directly to that store. It makes it for a much safer environment for all of our employees and customers. I'm going to keep it brief, as this is a preliminary plat, so I will be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Yes, Mr. Phillips?
I'll repeat my questions. Do you have any idea what's going to happen to lots 1 and lots 3 and the status of that existing building and all of that?
For the building, as of now, we are showing to keep it. We don't have any plans yet as to who we're going to sell it to. We're going to see what kind of suitors we come across. I haven't heard any plans yet on that. As of now, though, we are looking to keep that building.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Cradoff?
I'll repeat my question. Are you going to make any changes to the northwest entry right where Flowerama is?
The access point to Flowerama is actually further south than our access point, so it's going to be moving further north away from the intersection, and we will redo it with new concrete.
Oh, see, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Sure.
Or direct a question to staff that I didn't think about until now. But isn't -- aren't the sidewalks approached by Conditions 8 through 10, I believe, in the application, I think? It talks about the 80/80 sidewalks and some of that, so I think that may be approached in that piece.
Well, yes, they are addressed in the preliminary plat, but in fact, you don't have to install sidewalk until a final plat comes.
Right.
It's a condition of the final approval of the final plat. So if they -- we've allowed projects to go forward in the past in phases, so if they -- if their first phase of this particular subdivision is for the QuickTrip site, then that's -- we will require sidewalks along that particular property. It's with each final plat that precedes that, the other two, then we will ask for the sidewalk at that time, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hawley. Yes, sir. Would you like to elaborate on the discussion? If I could get you to state your name?
Ron Cowherd with AGC Engineers, 405 South Minter, Liberty, Missouri. I think I would like to just clarify a little bit, not so much on the sidewalk, but more of the functionality of the requirement down here at 40 and 7 Highway. We, as staff had indicated, we've been in multiple conversations with MoDOT as well as city staff regarding access to this piece of property or the pieces of property. It's actually four properties that are being assembled into one. MoDOT has indicated to us that they have some concern about pedestrian crossings here as it relates to vehicular traffic. The idea or the thought behind that, I believe, not speaking for MoDOT here, I'm not their representative, but the thought being it's a rather high-volume intersection. We can all agree to that. Whenever you introduce pedestrian crossings to that, that starts to deter vehicular movements because you have to open up certain gaps for those folks to be able to cross. That coupled with the fact that there's -- there are no refuge -- we call them refuge islands, where you will see an area out in the middle of an intersection where at least you can get and be safe as the cars whip past you in opposite directions. There's really not any room for that. We just met with Steve Holloway with MoDOT, Vernon Coke with MoDOT, a couple of their traffic engineers as well just last Friday. So I'm not here to speak for MoDOT. I just wanted to be clear that although the staff condition, I believe it's staff condition Staff condition number nine indicates that we shall do that. We would just like to clarify that we're certainly in agreement to do that if it's approved by MoDOT and all the other governing agencies that need to make that happen. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Going once?
I think I got my answer.
Okay, thank you. I'm just waiting. Yes, Commissioner Peel?
I move that PPE-10-15-5020 with 16 conditions be approved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Sanders. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I just -- I'm just not -- I think we're creating two little spots here that are never going to get developed. I just -- sorry.
So we have one no?
That's a no.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the preliminary plat for Chapman Farms Lot 10. Mr. Hawley is going to present that this evening.
This is a request for approval of a preliminary plat for Lot 10 at Chapman Farms. The site is located east of Southwest 7 Highway on the north side of Mason School Road. It consists of approximately 30 acres, and the proposal is for 105 single-family residential Excuse me. As of November 15th in 2004, the City Council approved the requested rezonings, the PUD concept plan for Chapman Farms, and the final plat for Chapman Farms Development. It was a for-sale final plat, and what occurs when you do a for-sale final plat is that there is also an agreement that goes along with that, that with each sub-developer within the Chapman Farms PUD area, as they come forward, they are required then to do their own preliminary plat that actually shows own preliminary plat that actually shows the lots that are being proposed, as well as a final plat and a PUD final plan. So, excuse me, this is the first step in that process with the preliminary plat. I think the staff report pretty much speaks for itself, and there really isn't, isn't any surprises within the staff report. The sidewalks will be required within the development. They have not identified streetscape trees yet, but will have to do that at the final plat stage. Their public infrastructure, including sanitary sewer and water, will be required, and maintenance bonding associated with all of that will also be required. They will be required to provide as-built drawings, as well as their public infrastructure, including streets, will have to be provided prior to final plating. They, again, may final plat in phases, so with each phase, they'll have to do the infrastructure that's required for that particular phase. There will be maintenance agreements, obviously. Easements will be shown on all final plaques. They will need to provide an erosion control plan consistent with DNR requirements, Missouri DNR requirements, as well as the city's. And with that, staff does recommend approval. There are 15, I'm sorry, 14 conditions provided in the staff report, and staff would like to add one additional condition, making it a total of 15. That condition would be that the stormwater management plan be updated per staff comments provided in the Chapman Farms Lot 10 preliminary plat staff report, and any layout changes resulting in the update of the stormwater master plan. Management plan, I'm sorry, has to be incorporated into the final plan and the final plat. And for clarification on that condition, if you have questions, Ben is here, and he can help us with that. So with that, we are proposing that there be a total of 15 conditions. The 14 shown in the staff report with the addition of the 15th condition, and I will stand for questions.
Any questions? Just Commissioner Billups.
Mr. Holly, how does this layout compare back to the original Chapman plan? Is it about the same number of lots and sizes and all of that?
The sizes are very similar. However, they do have more than originally planned. My recollection, we can let the developer speak to this, but my recollection, Scott, do you remember, did they have 90, it was either, we'll let the developer speak to that. He remembers what the original number was. But they did increase the number of lots here to the 105, and as part of staff initial discussions with them, we talked to them about the capacity of the sanitary sewer, because as you know, that is a neighborhood improvement district for the sanitary sewer. And we talked about how that, the addition of these lots might impact that NID, and it has been worked out that there will be additional lots here, and that will be traded off, or some additional lots possibly elsewhere. But if not, the capacity within that sanitary sewer was available to add the additional lots. That was the primary, the primary concern when they came forward to us with adding lots was, is that going to impact any of the other developments within the Chapman Farms and ID?
And is this the right spot? Because I can't remember. We have, it's been a while since we've had a big plat like this, where we talk about house sizes, or is that on down the road?
It will be on down the road. It will be with the final plat, but yes, there is a specified lots, house size.
And how is that going to compare with what was original in the plan?
I'll let the developer address that. I believe that the homes are going to be, actually are going to meet the minimum floor area requirement that was originally thought to be on this particular, this particular development. Yeah.
Thank you.
This particular development, just maybe to help with a little of the positioning of it, is, I think it is north of, am I right on that? East of Greenbrier, and south of the shores, and north of Mason School Road. Gives you an idea of kind of where that's situated.
Any other questions for Mr. Holly? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Slish, would you like to make a presentation for us?
Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee, Summit, Missouri. I don't have much to add to Jim's kind of explanation. Essentially, this is kind of the continuation for Griffin Riley Investments. They were the ones who developed the second phase of Lakeside, which is kind of north and west, north side of the lake. They're the ones who bought and finished out the shores. They're the ones who have bought and have continued to work through Greenbrier. So the process and idea of purchasing this piece of property and taking it from, I believe the original number was in that mid-'80s. We think it's '83, '85. We're just debating that number. It's in that mid-'80s. Essentially, what we did is we maintained the existing green space that was there in that original plat, and just modified and kind of re-rack some of those roadways through there to allow two things. One, the intent is to provide a large amount of green space on the western side, kind of southwest side of this site. So, I think there's someone else in here, somebody. Kind of down in this area to propose some type of an amenity that'll connect Greenbrier and this area to give us some kind of walkability from Mason School going north into the subdivision, north into shores, where then last year we completed a walking trail, some fitness areas and things like that, to kind of bring this whole area together. So, so the idea was really to generate this kind of larger green space area to allow us some type of an amenity that we're going to continue to work towards exactly what that is. You know, lot sizes are basically the same as we've seen through the Greenbrier, the shores, and the Lakeside. We're potentially proposing, you know, kind of some smaller-sized houses, still meeting all the requirements of the subdivision, but allowing for some different product variety as it kind of continued through the area. Because as I said, as Griffin Riley Investments has done the shores, and Lakeside, and Greenbriers, what we're trying to do is allow Summit Custom Homes, who's kind of the parent company, the home building side of this, to allow them some product variability in there, so it's not just continuous same two-story, you know, stucco-style home or in that kind of continuous process. So that's, you know, kind of all I had to say, I think. Unless you guys have any questions, I'm here for whatever you need.
Any questions for Mr. Slish? Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Slish, are all the homes going to be brown?
They actually, to answer your question, they, Summit Custom Homes has just started kind of a new deal in their subdivisions, because they're doing this now more and more where they've, you know, over the years, bought over these subdivisions and kind of gone at that same plan, where they realize everything's starting to look the same. Natural earth colors are beginning to be the same. So they've actually started creating some color palettes, where they're actually adding some accents to their houses. So in the subdivision in Lee Summit that they're doing, that's right now underway, they've actually started doing some things to kind of pop some different colors in there and kind of modify some of these things. And that's, you know, again, kind of the idea of this southwest area is to provide some, some different lot looks, some different lot sizes, to allow them to start doing something other than having that kind of mundane look over and over and over. So the idea is, is they've got an ID, they've seen that and recognize it, and they're trying to work that through to try to add some color to it as well. So at this point, I'll say, no, I don't think so. They're going to be working on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Slish.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Peel.
I move that PPE-10-15-5022 with the 14 conditions, as well as the storm management plan, condition 15, be approved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Billups is second. All those in favor, oh, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be other business. Mr. Allen, Mr. Holly, do either one of you have anything?
To provide a reminder tonight for, again, the November 30th Planning Commissioner Training, and Karen would like by the 20th, November 20th, to have your RSVP. So if you're, if you have an RSVP, then you are thinking of going, please contact Karen and let her know that you'll be doing that.
Thanks. And Scott has something as well.
86 lots. Sorry, I finally found it. 86 lots, it was back in 2006 was when that, the Briar Valley was originally approved with, as a preliminary plat. Oh, sorry, June of 2007, 2007. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Also, just wanted to acknowledge what's coming up on November 23rd.
Which is our next meeting.
Yes, the next meeting, thank you. Additional approvals for QuickTrip coming forward, a conditional use permit for that use, as well as site plan design review. We also have White Oak Marketplace, which is redevelopment of White Oak. There's site plan design review as far as we know, and PUD final plan. So, yeah, for the Phase 1, which is the retail component, the residential component on the, on the west side is not included. So those are, as well as now the continued conditional use permit for Prescott Plaza. So, full agenda for next meeting. Again, that is the Monday of Thanksgiving, so if you do know you'll be out of town, otherwise unavailable, please let Karen know as soon as possible. And that's, I think, all we have from staff.
All right, thank you. Any other business to be brought forward? All right. Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Peel, might as well close it out tonight. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Billups is the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.